Okay, well, you're fast. Good evening and welcome to the Elk Grove Unified School District Board of Education meeting. We met in closed session and we voted to approve Scott Hadley at Helen Carkocello as Vice Principal. We also voted to move forward with the hiring process of the new Superintendent of Elk Grove Unified School District, Christopher Hoffman, and that item will be formalized in Item Number Six of the Agenda tonight. We voted unanimously, all Board members were present, and all voted in the affirmative. I would like to announce that tonight's meeting is being videotaped and recorded, will be available on the district's YouTube channel. We have blue cards just outside the boardroom for anyone who would like to address the Board. Please complete it, hand it to a staff member at the table on my right, and indicate if you wish to speak on or off the agenda. If it is on the agenda, we assume you wish to speak when that time comes. I would also like to welcome tonight a new face up here with us, Mr. Mark Sarudi, who is acting as interim Superintendent for us, and this is his first day, so we are very pleased to have you.[80.31][80.31](APPLAUSE). At this time, I will ask Mr. Fortina to invite up a special guest. We've started our Board members by recognizing a dedicated member of our community to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, I'd like to have Mrs. Ann Spencer come up with her daughter Charlotte and Principal Mike Goulden.[101.42][101.42](APPLAUSE). The staff and administration at Consumnis River Elementary would like to take this opportunity to recognize and thank Ann Spencer, her husband Jerry, and their children Elizabeth, Audrey, and Charlotte for their outstanding contributions to the school and their dedication to our students and families. Ann began her volunteer career at Consumnis River more than nine years ago when her daughter Elizabeth was in kindergarten. Elizabeth, now an eighth grader at Captain Albionni School, and Audrey and Charlotte, both fifth graders at Consumnis River, are exceptionally talented in activities inside and outside the school. Elizabeth and Audrey are involved in competitive gymnastics throughout the year while Charlotte is a blossoming thespian.
Thespian.
Thespian. You're gonna have to...[169.62][169.62](LAUGHTER). Most recently appearing in this summer's Eldorado Musical Theater production of Jungle Book. All three girls also happen to be exemplary students who regularly appear on our honor roll. Through the years, Mrs. Spencer has devoted herself to promoting family involvement and fundraising in order to provide the students at Consumnis River with the best possible educational experience possible. She is especially passionate about providing resources that allow the arts to continue being an integral part of every child's educational experience. Over the course of her nine years, Ann has done it all. She has served in just about every Board position there is, from historian to Vice President to President. During Mrs. Spencer's tenure with our PTA, she has rallied our family, community, and helped the PTA earn more than $200,000. As a result of her efforts, our students have benefited from many opportunities, including a complete laptop lab, art supplies for classroom art activities, a 20-per-hour library tech position, in order to make the most of our Lester and Fay Ledbetter Library. She has also provided a large shade structure for our playground and trees that will provide shade for future generations of students. Ann and her husband Jerry have also been strong supporters of agriculturally-related educational experiences. Every October, Jerry can be found hauling dozens of hay bales to school for the annual Harvest Festival. Beyond her work with the PTA, Ann played a central role in the creation of our annual Salute to Agricultural Day that takes place each spring. Salute to Ag Day is an opportunity for our K-6 students to see and taste the fruits of local agriculture and to learn about sustainable agricultural practices. Jerry was the highlighted performer at the 2013 Ag Day who, along with the Spencer's Dogs, provided a wonderful demonstration of how the family's pets can be working animals who love to do their herding thing. For nearly a decade, Ann's vision and leadership have helped guide us in providing those things our community feels most strongly about. It is with this in mind that the Consumnis River Elementary School would like to recognize and honor tonight Ann Spencer and the whole Spencer family.[322.41][322.41](APPLAUSE). And now, if you'll lead us in the pledge, please?
and sharing information about what's going on. I'll call on Sheldon High School to come give their student Board member representative report.
Good evening, President Cox, fellow Board members, and interim Superintendent
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Sarudi, and Ms. Heine. My name is Cal Giatwoll, and I'm currently the ASB President at Sheldon High School.
all. Thank you.
My name is Brian Martin, and I'm currently ASB Vice President.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me. Good meeting you.
Our school year began with a positive outlook towards the 2014-2015 school year.
Nice meeting you.
Thank you very much.[361.47][361.47](APPLAUSE).
We started off with our Team Husky mentors coming in on August 7th and 8th to prepare for our annual freshman orientation, which took place on Saturday, August 9th. Here, the class of 2018 was introduced to the glimpse of high school. They met with their Team Husky mentors, who will keep in touch with them every other Wednesday throughout the school year. The purpose of this program is to help our new students transition smoothly from middle school to high school and to increase their confidence level and make sure they realize that anything is possible. On the first Friday, our senior students were delighted to open their senior year with their first event, Senior Sunrise. They woke up an hour early to come break the ice with the class that they will be graduating with in a few months. They started the day off with yummy pancakes, freshly cut fruit, and ice-cold oranges. This event began the road of their last year of high school, and it set the mood for the last bit of teenage life they have before they move on to the amazing future they have in store for them. The following week didn't lose any excitement. This week consisted of our major community event, the Welcome Back Carnival. At the Welcome Back Carnival, Sheldon's, all of Sheldon High School's community was invited. This evening was full of games, inflatables, music, Sheldon's own club performances, and of course, food. The attendance was unbelievably high and full of energy. Even though it only lasted three hours, the crowd was too satisfied to even leave. Over the summer, Sheldon's own men's basketball hosted the Trial Tournament. Also, the boys traveled to Fresno, Rockland, and many other local areas for tournaments. In addition, Sheldon's baseball team had summertime scrimmage games.
Sheldon's very own cross country team began setting high standards for the rest of the season. On September 6th, the team traveled to Lagoon Valley Invitational and the Lagoon Valley Park in Vacaville. Our varsity boys and girls took fourth place out of 20 teams. Also, last Friday, our teams traveled to Lodi and both earned first place. This is an example of all the hard work men, our men and women's teams, have been putting in to kick off 2014 and 2015 year. Our events continue with a surprise speaker for our freshman class Annual Commit to Graduate Assembly. David Garibaldi took time to speak to our class of 2018 about never giving up. He spoke strongly and dreamed big and achieving even bigger. Our hopes were to show that the future has lots to show for us. They must take it step by step. Not only did Garibaldi talk to our excited freshman class, he also came sub to our, sub to be, to his high school mentor, Mr. Sullivan. He subbed for about two weeks and brought his custom Lamborghini. Speaking about our amazing Vapa classes, very, our very own Sheldon Theater has been making our name shine all over headlines. We are pleased to announce that Sheldon's Theater was honored with four Ellie's at the Sarta Youth Ellie Award. We are very proud of our students to put so much effort into their passion. We give major props to our talent directors, Royale Fox for Productions Once on the Island, which was nominated for nine Ellie Awards, and Craig Howard for The Laramie Project, which was nominated for seven Ellie Awards. Another Vapa achievement is very, our very own Josh Corrigan, who won the Congressional Art Competition for the district for his photographic piece, Veteran Tom. We are proud to see Josh's work displayed in the Capitol Building in Washington City for an entire year.
Now that we started our year off with a bang, we will continue with more amazing achievements and our surpriseful events. Speaking of surprises, our school was one of 25 nominated to host the High School Nation Tour, which will take place this Friday. In the near future, we'll be kicking off our homecoming festivities. On an ending note, we would like to thank you all for your time and hope you have a great night.
Thank you.[605.51][605.51](APPLAUSE).
Sounds like you're off to a great start. Now, we'll hear from Valley High School.[616.66][616.66](APPLAUSE).
Good evening, Superintendent Sarudi, President Cox, members of the Board, and Ms. Heine. My name is Mariah Howdigee, and I'm a senior at Valley High School.
And I'm Jack Danhill, also a senior at Valley High School. Over the summer, Valley's Associated Student Body gave up a month of their summer to bond as a program as well as plan out the upcoming events for the new school year. Members of the Valley High School Band also met over the summer, led by our new band teacher, Mr. Shepherd. Hours of hard work, new songs, a big improvement made for our strong VHS band family this year. Our fall sports teams held tryouts for the upcoming fall season over the summer. All of our teams had a successful turnout of people who were eager to be a part of the various teams. On August 13th, we welcomed our biggest class yet. Class of 2018 was brought into our Viking family. Our link crew held morning activities to help our new freshmen feel good and comfortable with their new school and get ready for the beginning of the long four-year journey ahead. Later that evening, our Viking parents came ready to learn more about what we have to offer at Valley. Our new Vikings explored the campus and tried to get familiar with the new schedule before their first day of high school. After a well-deserved three months off, our Viking staff and students came back to campus on August 14th to make memories and start a new year of academic accomplishments. The Valley High ASB, along with our Activities Director, Mr. Lane, held our annual freshman-only rally the first Friday back at school. Activities of the afternoon included motivational speaking, things every freshman should know, and tons of Viking bonding. With the help of our California Garrett Program, our class of 2017 held the Commitment to Graduate Celebration. The night consisted of talks about college, door prizes, and information on many different colleges.
Our clubs got back in session, ready and eager to recruit new members during Club Brush. Latinos Unidos, Go Green Club, and Mon Club, just to name a few. Music and games were played all week during lunch to encourage our students to get out there and get involved. At the end of the week, all of Valley's clubs brought and sold food to our campus as a goodbye to the week-long Club Brush festivities. Valley's rallies have turned over a new leaf this year. On September 5th, we welcomed back all our students with our Fall Sports Rally. A performance by our footworks dance company showed got the crowd pumping. Our traditional class chants competition got pretty competitive, but in the end, our 2015 senior class took the well-deserved win. Valley held their annual Unity Day on September 11th. The day was filled with both good and bad emotions, but in the end, our Vikings came together as one for a day showing support and sympathy for their brothers and sisters who were in pain. Later that night, our Viking Back to School Night was held on campus. All of our VHS parents were invited onto campus to see what their children had been doing at school, as well as their great academic accomplishments. Valley's football team has had an awesome start to the season with a 1-in-1 record after Week Two. We are very confident that our boys will make it far this year. Our homecoming season has finally begun. Powder Pop practice began yesterday. Our girl football players are getting down and dirty on the football field, preparing for next week's game, while our board cheerleaders are getting ready to get pretty and fabulous for their soon-to-come rally performance. We have made many memories with our Viking family. We will soon be making more that we would like you to be a part of. On September 22nd, Valley will be holding our annual Homecoming Presents Rally, as well as our entertaining Powder Pop game. We would also like to invite you to our homecoming parade that will be held on October 3rd. Come check out our Global Odyssey themed floats. And this has been our report for the night. We thank you for your time and wish you all a wonderful evening.[843.01][843.01](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Excellent report. And I'd like to also acknowledge the Principals from these two schools. We have Principal Paula Duckin here from Sheldon, and Principal Chelsea Buller from Valley High School.[858.73][858.73](APPLAUSE). And Activity Director from Valley High School, Mr. Dan Lane. So, thank you for their support.[866.13][866.13](APPLAUSE). There's a lot going on in our high schools, as you can tell. Next on our agenda, oh, students. You are allowed to go home and do your homework if you wish, or you can stay and enjoy the meeting. Looks like you're leaving. The next on our agenda, we're really pleased to introduce our new administrators to the district in either a new position or new to our district. And I would like to invite the Board down to greet them, and we have our Associate Superintendent of Elementary, Ms. Donna Cherry, and our Associate Superintendent of Secondary, Ms. Tina Penna, who will do the introductions.
Good evening, President Cox, members of the Board, Superintendent Sarudi, and Ms. Heine. My name is Mariah Howdigee, and I'm a senior at Valley High School.
And I'm Jack Danhill, also a senior at Valley High School. Over the summer, Valley's Associated Student Body gave up a month of their summer to bond as a program as well as plan out the upcoming events for the new school year. Members of the Valley High School Band also met over the summer, led by our new band teacher, Mr. Shepherd. Hours of hard work, new songs, a big improvement made for our strong VHS band family this year. Our fall sports teams held tryouts for the upcoming fall season over the summer. All of our teams had a successful turnout of people who were eager to be a part of the various teams. On August 13th, we welcomed our biggest class yet. Class of 2018 was brought into our Viking family. Our link crew held morning activities to help our new freshmen feel good and comfortable with their new school and get ready for the beginning of the long four-year journey ahead. Later that evening, our Viking parents came ready to learn more about what we have to offer at Valley. Our new Vikings explored the campus and tried to get familiar with the new schedule before their first day of high school. After a well-deserved three months off, our Viking staff and students came back to campus on August 14th to make memories and start a new year of academic accomplishments. The Valley High ASB, along with our Activities Director, Mr. Lane, held our annual freshman-only rally the first Friday back at school. Activities of the afternoon included motivational speaking, things every freshman should know, and tons of Viking bonding. With the help of our California Garrett Program, our class of 2017 held the Commitment to Graduate Celebration. The night consisted of talks about college, door prizes, and information on many different colleges.
Our clubs got back in session, ready and eager to recruit new members during Club Brush. Latinos Unidos, Go Green Club, and Mon Club, just to name a few. Music and games were played all week during lunch to encourage our students to get out there and get involved. At the end of the week, all of Valley's clubs brought and sold food to our campus as a goodbye to the week-long Club Brush festivities. Valley's rallies have turned over a new leaf this year. On September 5th, we welcomed back all our students with our Fall Sports Rally. A performance by our footworks dance company showed got the crowd pumping. Our traditional class chants competition got pretty competitive, but in the end, our 2015 senior class took the well-deserved win. Valley held their annual Unity Day on September 11th. The day was filled with both good and bad emotions, but in the end, our Vikings came together as one for a day showing support and sympathy for their brothers and sisters who were in pain. Later that night, our Viking Back to School Night was held on campus. All of our VHS parents were invited onto campus to see what their children had been doing at school, as well as their great academic accomplishments. Valley's football team has had an awesome start to the season with a 1-in-1 record after Week Two. We are very confident that our boys will make it far this year. Our homecoming season has finally begun. Powder Pop practice began yesterday. Our girl football players are getting down and dirty on the football field, preparing for next week's game, while our board cheerleaders are getting ready to get pretty and fabulous for their soon-to-come rally performance. We have made many memories with our Viking family. We will soon be making more that we would like you to be a part of. On September 22nd, Valley will be holding our annual Homecoming Presents Rally, as well as our entertaining Powder Pop game. We would also like to invite you to our homecoming parade that will be held on October 3rd. Come check out our Global Odyssey themed floats. And this has been our report for the night. We thank you for your time and wish you all a wonderful evening.[1133.01][1133.01](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Excellent report. And I'd like to also acknowledge the Principals from these two schools. We have Principal Paula Duckin here from Sheldon, and Principal Chelsea Buller from Valley High School.[1148.73][1148.73](APPLAUSE). And Activity Director from Valley High School, Mr. Dan Lane. So, thank you for their support.[1156.15][1156.15](APPLAUSE). There's a lot going on in our high schools, as you can tell. Next on our agenda, oh, students. You are allowed to go home and do your homework if you wish, or you can stay and enjoy the meeting. Looks like you're leaving. The next on our agenda, we're really pleased to introduce our new administrators to the district in either a new position or new to our district. And I would like to invite the Board down to greet them, and we have our Associate Superintendent of Elementary, Ms. Donna Cherry, and our Associate Superintendent of Secondary, Ms. Tina Penna, who will do the introductions.
Thank you. Good evening, President Cox, members of the Board, Superintendent Sarudi, and Ms. Heine. My name is Mariah Howdigee, and I'm a senior at Valley High School.
And I'm Jack Danhill, also a senior at Valley High School. Over the summer, Valley's Associated Student Body gave up a month of their summer to bond as a program as well as plan out the upcoming events for the new school year. Members of the Valley High School Band also met over the summer, led by our new band teacher, Mr. Shepherd. Hours of hard work, new songs, a big improvement made for our strong VHS band family this year. Our fall sports teams held tryouts for the upcoming fall season over the summer. All of our teams had a successful turnout of people who were eager to be a part of the various teams. On August 13th, we welcomed our biggest class yet. Class of 2018 was brought into our Viking family. Our link crew held morning activities to help our new freshmen feel good and comfortable with their new school and get ready for the beginning of the long four-year journey ahead. Later that evening, our Viking parents came ready to learn more about what we have to offer at Valley. Our new Vikings explored the campus and tried to get familiar with the new schedule before their first day of high school. After a well-deserved three months off, our Viking staff and students came back to campus on August 14th to make memories and start a new year of academic accomplishments. The Valley High ASB, along with our Activities Director, Mr. Lane, held our annual freshman-only rally the first Friday back at school. Activities of the afternoon included motivational speaking, things every freshman should know, and tons of Viking bonding. With the help of our California Garrett Program, our class of 2017 held the Commitment to Graduate Celebration. The night consisted of talks about college, door prizes, and information on many different colleges.
Our clubs got back in session, ready and eager to recruit new members during Club Brush. Latinos Unidos, Go Green Club, and Mon Club, just to name a few. Music and games were played all week during lunch to encourage our students to get out there and get involved. At the end of the week, all of Valley's clubs brought and sold food to our campus as a goodbye to the week-long Club Brush festivities. Valley's rallies have turned over a new leaf this year. On September 5th, we welcomed back all our students with our Fall Sports Rally. A performance by our footworks dance company showed got the crowd pumping. Our traditional class chants competition got pretty competitive, but in the end, our 2015 senior class took the well-deserved win. Valley held their annual Unity Day on September 11th. The day was filled with both good and bad emotions, but in the end, our Vikings came together as one for a day showing support and sympathy for their brothers and sisters who were in pain. Later that night, our Viking Back to School Night was held on campus. All of our VHS parents were invited onto campus to see what their children had been doing at school, as well as their great academic accomplishments. Valley's football team has had an awesome start to the season with a 1-in-1 record after Week Two. We are very confident that our boys will make it far this year. Our homecoming season has finally begun. Powder Pop practice began yesterday. Our girl football players are getting down and dirty on the football field, preparing for next week's game, while our board cheerleaders are getting ready to get pretty and fabulous for their soon-to-come rally performance. We have made many memories with our Viking family. We will soon be making more that we would like you to be a part of. On September 22nd, Valley will be holding our annual Homecoming Presents Rally, as well as our entertaining Powder Pop game. We would also like to invite you to our homecoming parade that will be held on October 3rd. Come check out our Global Odyssey themed floats. And this has been our report for the night. We thank you for your time and wish you all a wonderful evening.[1393.15][1393.15](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Excellent report. And I'd like to also acknowledge the Principals from these two schools. We have Principal Paula Duckin here from Sheldon, and Principal Chelsea Buller from Valley High School.[1408.15][1408.15](APPLAUSE). And Activity Director from Valley High School, Mr. Dan Lane. So, thank you for their support.[1416.15][1416.15](APPLAUSE). There's a lot going on in our high schools, as you can tell. Next on our agenda, oh, students. You are allowed to go home and do your homework if you wish, or you can stay and enjoy the meeting. Looks like you're leaving.[1461.15][1461.15](LAUGHTER). The next on our agenda, we're really pleased to introduce our new administrators to the district in either a new position or new to our district. And I would like to invite the Board down to greet them, and we have our Associate Superintendent of Elementary, Ms. Donna Cherry, and our Associate Superintendent of Secondary, Ms. Tina Penna, who will do the introductions.
Thank you. Good evening, President Cox, members of the Board, Superintendent Sarudi, and Ms. Heine. My name is Mariah Howdigee, and I'm a senior at Valley High School.
And I'm Jack Danhill, also a senior at Valley High School. Over the summer, Valley's Associated Student Body gave up a month of their summer to bond as a program as well as plan out the upcoming events for the new school year. Members of the Valley High School Band also met over the summer, led by our new band teacher, Mr. Shepherd. Hours of hard work, new songs, a big improvement made for our strong VHS band family this year. Our fall sports teams held tryouts for the upcoming fall season over the summer. All of our teams had a successful turnout of people who were eager to be a part of the various teams. On August 13th, we welcomed our biggest class yet. Class of 2018 was brought into our Viking family. Our link crew held morning activities to help our new freshmen feel good and comfortable with their new school and get ready for the beginning of the long four-year journey ahead. Later that evening, our Viking parents came ready to learn more about what we have to offer at Valley. Our new Vikings explored the campus and tried to get familiar with the new schedule before their first day of high school. After a well-deserved three months off, our Viking staff and students came back to campus on August 14th to make memories and start a new year of academic accomplishments. The Valley High ASB, along with our Activities Director, Mr. Lane, held our annual freshman-only rally the first Friday back at school. Activities of the afternoon included motivational speaking, things every freshman should know, and tons of Viking bonding. With the help of our California Garrett Program, our class of 2017 held the Commitment to Graduate Celebration. The night consisted of talks about college, door prizes, and information on many different colleges. Our clubs got back in session, ready and eager to recruit new members during Club Brush. Latinos Unidos, Go Green Club, and Mon Club, just to name a few. Music and games were played all week during lunch to encourage our students to get out there and get involved. At the end of the week, all of Valley's clubs brought and sold food to our campus as a goodbye to the week-long Club Brush festivities. Valley's rallies have turned over a new leaf this year. On September 5th, we welcomed back all our students with our Fall Sports Rally. A performance by our footworks dance company showed got the crowd pumping. Our traditional class chants competition got pretty competitive, but in the end, our 2015 senior class took the well-deserved win. Valley held their annual Unity Day on September 11th. The day was filled with both good and bad emotions, but in the end, our Vikings came together as one for a day showing support and sympathy for their brothers and sisters who were in pain. Later that night, our Viking Back to School Night was held on campus. All of our VHS parents were invited onto campus to see what their children had been doing at school, as well as their great academic accomplishments. Valley's football team has had an awesome start to the season with a 1-in-1 record after Week Two. We are very confident that our boys will make it far this year. Our homecoming season has finally begun. Powder Pop practice began yesterday. Our girl football players are getting down and dirty on the football field, preparing for next week's game, while our board cheerleaders are getting ready to get pretty and fabulous for their soon-to-come rally performance. We have made many memories with our Viking family. We will soon be making more that we would like you to be a part of. On September 22nd, Valley will be holding our annual Homecoming Presents Rally, as well as our entertaining Powder Pop game. We would also like to invite you to our homecoming parade that will be held on October 3rd. Come check out our Global Odyssey themed floats. And this has been our report for the night. We thank you for your time and wish you all a wonderful evening.[1577.15][1577.15](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Excellent report. And I'd like to also acknowledge the Principals from these two schools. We have Principal Paula Duckin here from Sheldon, and Principal Chelsea Buller from Valley High School.[1583.15][1583.15](APPLAUSE). And Activity Director from Valley High School, Mr. Dan Lane. So, thank you for their support.[1586.15][1586.15](APPLAUSE). There's a lot going on in our high schools, as you can tell. Next on our agenda, oh, students. You are allowed to go home and do your homework if you wish, or you can stay and enjoy the meeting. Looks like you're leaving.[1592.15][1592.15](LAUGHTER). The next on our agenda, we're really pleased to introduce our new administrators to the district in either a new position or new to our district. And I would like to invite the Board down to greet them, and we have our Associate Superintendent of Elementary, Ms. Donna Cherry, and our Associate Superintendent of Secondary, Ms. Tina Penna, who will do the introductions.
Thank you. Good evening, President Cox, members of the Board, Superintendent Sarudi, and Ms. Heine. My name is Mariah Howdigee, and I'm a senior at Valley High School.
And I'm Jack Danhill, also a senior at Valley High School. Over the summer, Valley's Associated Student Body gave up a month of their summer to bond as a program as well as plan out the upcoming events for the new school year. Members of the Valley High School Band also met over the summer, led by our new band
as the next superintendent for Elk Grove Unified School District. In this process this year, it was a very intense but thorough process for the last two and a half months, and we had a lot of help and a lot of meetings and a lot of people contributing to help us in this. Many community members contributed their ideas on what they wanted to see in the next superintendent, as well as employee groups and employees. We also, and in a different avenue for us to take than we've done in the past, though we don't do this very often, we asked our key stakeholder committees to send representatives to actually interview our final candidates, and we, as a board, use that information in making, helping us make our selection. So, I wanted to recognize those people that were on that and took the time to help us in the interview process. And if you're here, would you please stand? Jennifer Ballerini from Afsmi, don't think she's here tonight. Armando Fernandez from PISWA, and Mary Deutsch from CSCEA. Thank you, Mary. Scott Sidmore from EGA. Brian Wiens from ATU. Dave Nevis is principal at Elk Grove Elementary, and he represented Elk Grove teams. And we had a student representative, Jade So. We also had Brad Pennick from the Superintendent's Advisory, John Shook from our business community. Thank you very much for your time. Diane Barnes from our Community Advisory Committee, Mark Mendenhall from Finance Committee, and Yolanda Contreras from our D-LAC. And I saw Yolanda. Thank you all very much, and we really appreciate your dedication input and your adherence to the confidentiality process. You did a very good job with that. To move on, I also would like to thank Mr. Bo Hewitt, who is attending tonight. He was our key point person in our search firm that helped guide this and through the process, as well as provide candidates and do the background checks and do things that were important to us as a board to have done on selecting a superintendent. I'd also like to thank Liz Grasswich and Arlene Heine for their, all their behind-the-scenes work, which was quite detailed. Then we're moving forward to the person that we selected as a board.
I'd like to thank our president, Priscilla Coxford, who was working at 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock in the morning sometimes, and she was very, very instrumental in putting this thing together.
Thank you, Ms. Amavisca. Thank you. Didn't expect that. As a board, we really came together and really did our homework, did a lot of work on making sure that we would choose the right person for this district. And the person that we have moved forward as a finalist, and we are discussing the contract tonight, is Christopher Hoffman, who is currently superintendent in the Eldorado Union High School District. He has experience along the theme of our administrators, that he used to be in Elk Grove and is coming back. So, he was a teacher here, he grew up here, he went to schools here. He actually was a vice principal at Laguna Creek when it opened, and then he also went and had experiences as principals in other districts, in Lowdy, where Mr. Hewitt's from, and then, well, you were from here too, where you were superintendent after you left us, and also in San Juan Unified as a principal, and brings a great track record of someone who fit our criteria as a superintendent, as a visionary and innovative leader and a collaborator, an ethical person, a creative public school educator, and a good manager. Those were our criteria when we were looking for superintendent. And we are really pleased to bring him forward as a finalist for our superintendency tonight. And so, with that, I will open up discussion on the contract. The board members have been given copies of the contract, and also there are contract copies of that available for anyone who would like to have one, either from the public or press. These are public documents. So, I will open that up for board member discussion. Ms. Singh Allen?
Great. I was very, very pleased with our process, very transparent, included stakeholder input, which was very remarkable, and I think, and hope that this sort of sets the precedence for other school districts to follow a similar process. The stakeholder input, I read every single one of those comments, and it really validated my own comments and feelings and what I felt at heart was the right decision. It was nice to see that the stakeholders had similar agreement as to the qualifications, the background, and just overall, the process was just wonderful and really did get accolades from other school districts on what we did here. So, I congratulate McPherson and Jacobson for your role in this as well. It was wonderful working with you. You brought us outstanding candidates, and it was a very tough decision, very tough decision. The quality was top-notch, but I am very, very pleased with ultimately who rose to the top as our final candidate, and I'm very, very happy for our district, for Valley High School. Yay, as the principal, they're cheering on. I think it's the beginning of a new day, and, you know, I just can't be more excited to be part of this process and be here on this critical historical moment where we just see bright, bright future for our children, for our district. And again, I think that that will set the team, the theme, and that is collaboration. The process was collaborative, and Mr. Hoffman is collaborative, and I hope that that sets the stage for stakeholder input moving forward. So, my two cents on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions on that contract?
I just have a quick comment. At the beginning, I was probably the strongest advocate for this collaborative process, and as I saw it develop, I was quite proud that it came together the way in which each and every one of us had envisioned. I think this is a template for many others who are watching us that will certainly copy what we've been able to accomplish. Quite proud. I think we arrived at a very good decision.
Any comments?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Cox. Yeah, this was a really exciting process. From the data we got, from the questionnaires, all the way through the stakeholder interviews, and certainly the information that we garnered in our own deliberations, it was absolutely critical for us to look at someone who would have the educational vision that we were looking towards, someone who believed in collaboration, which includes, most importantly, inclusion. We had inclusion as an element that was critical in the selection process. Somebody who understands diversity, somebody who understands fiscal issues, somebody who will bring the entire district together in helping each employee understand their role in our mission for children. That was one of the points that came out in the surveys, and it's one that is seen very seriously, and we believe in our hearts that, that Mr. Hoffman is going to be a superintendent who is going to bring us to even higher levels than we are today. We believe this will be a district that will foster the innovation and the creativity that we were always known for, and I am very excited and cannot wait for his first day.
Yeah, I think my colleagues have covered it all. I'm just tickled to see Mr. Hoffman come to our district. He's got a high expectation from all of us up here. But most of all, here's a young man that came from the Valley region. I know he went to school with one of my children there years ago. I'm dating myself now. But I think, I think that he knows, he knows the area very well. He's, it's full inclusion, as Mr. Fortina just indicated. He's been around all ethnicities that he grew up under, and I see us moving this big train in the proper direction there. Thank you.
Well, this is the fourth time that I have been through the process, and each process, each time it was a little bit different than the previous one, and this, and this one was even more different than the other one. So, it was a good process. They each were good. They were as successful in bringing us people with longevity, and I'm sure that Mr. Hoffman will, will have his longevity, put his footprint on our district. It's, I think my colleagues have really voiced it very well for what our feelings are for all of us, and I can't wait till the new guy comes on board and gets to know everybody, and I hope I get a chance to get to know him before we leave. But now we have two Valley grads in the district office. So, yay Valley!
Mr. Perez?
All right. Since everybody's spoken, I'm going to give my little two cents. This young gentleman is from the salt of the earth. He's the product of our Elk Grove Unified School District. Very proud of him. He's very articulate, very good communicator. I have 100% faith that he will be here at least eight to 10 years and continue servicing our students throughout our district. And again, thank you, consultants, and I know that you're coming back. Give us part five.
It's our pleasure. It's an honor to be able to serve you as a board. We really appreciate working with you as a board, and you can say your important shift in this process.
Thanks again.
Thank you. With that, I will call for a motion.
So, move?
I think, I think we'd miss Singh Allen move, and Mr. Madison second, and we will do a roll call vote, so it's on the record for each.
Aye.
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 Enthusiastic aye.
Yes.
Yes, bring him on board.
And in the contract for, those that have copies, the start date for Mr. Hoffman will be November 17th, and I'm sure he will be talking to our current Superintendent Sarudy before then, but he does live in our district, and his family has been here, grown up here too, so, and he has sons at Casumna Soaks High School. So, quite a few connections that he has. And with that, what I'm going to do is pass down the contract for each board member to sign to make sure that we have that officially done, and I will sign it. The meet and greet for Mr. Hoffman, since now it is formally approved, will be tomorrow morning at 8:30 at Valley High School, and we're hoping that committee members will be there too. The stakeholder committee members, I'd like to introduce you again. I can see Allen's going to be there, and Mr. Hoffman will be there also, so we can actually have a opportunity to really hear from him and also to welcome him back to our district, as we seem to do so many of our administrators. So, okay. It's an exciting time, a historic moment, right, Ms. Pinkerton? Is she still here? We only do this every 10 years, so it's a very exciting time, and I want to just reiterate how wonderful it's been to work with the board and Mr. Hewitt on this process. Okay, now it will be time for another Valley High School graduate come forward and, and start us on the path to building facilities at some point to house our many students that are on the way. I have the environmental determination for Anatolia II Elementary School.
Thank you, President Cox, members of the board, Mr. Sarudy and Ms. Heine. Somewhat fitting, probably, for the first item after the new superintendent's contract will most likely be his first new school in his tenure. So, the item before you tonight, as you well know, is the environmental determination for the proposed Anatolia II Elementary School located in the city of Rancho Cordova. As the board is aware, the California Environmental Quality Act and your own board policy, 7160, requires that an environmental determination be made on any project which may adversely impact the environment. Based on the initial study that was prepared for the proposed project, it has been determined that with mitigation measures, no significant environmental impact has been identified pursuant to sequel guidelines, and it was determined in that initial study that a mitigated negative declaration was the appropriate study to perform for this project, which has now been prepared and circulated for public comment. With the school, proposed school improvements that build out the capacity of the new school is approximately 900 to 1,100 pre-K six students, along with various improvements to go along with that. There are four areas of mitigation that has been proposed in the mitigated negative declaration. Those are along the lines of air quality, biological, cultural, and traffic measures. All of these measures are things that are already prescribed in law and are already required either by federal, state, or local statute. With that, the mitigated negative declaration has been out for public comment since August 26th. The period closes on September 24th. Happy to report that you have zero public comments to date on the mitigated negative declaration. I will tell you, though, that there will be some coming forward from numerous agencies, mainly along the lines of the four areas of mitigation that I've already discussed. So, really, all those will entail is you have to subscribe to air quality standards with your construction standards and whatnot, things that we would have to do by law anyways. But again, happy that so far we have zero written or oral comments. The resolution tonight also covers all of your Title V requirements under the California Department of Education before a school site can be approved and before a school site can be acquired. As the board knows, we're actively negotiating the acquisition of this property now. Same process that you've recently used for the Vineyard Point Elementary School Number One, as well as the new Dillard Elementary School. So, with all of that, I would ask the board first, of course, if you have any questions of me, be happy to entertain those, but do you open and close a public hearing and you move the item forward to October 7th for adoption of the resolution?
Would you like to open the public hearing first?
Sure.
Okay. I would like to open the public hearing and receive any comments on the Anatolia II Elementary School project. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing and then open it up for discussion or questions from board members. Just a comment, I think you said it, but this is going to be moved forward to the October 7th meeting, correct?
Yeah, the board actually takes direction tonight to give me direction, I should say, to move this forward to October 7th.
Okay, correct.
I don't have a whole lot of questions. I've got actually one question, and I noticed that on the mitigating measures, it's a pretty standard. You get, you know, the suggestions, the measures. It's pretty much what we get on every single thing that we go about.
Yeah.
And we have a lot of owls in our district, don't we?
You, in terms of biology, you only have nesting birds and burrowing owls. And so, the contract, in terms of the ultimate construction, will have to cover how the contractor deals with those two areas. So, there will be a burrowing owl survey, there will be any other nesting surveys conducted before construction can start, and that's all prescribed in law and something that we have to follow anyhow.
My question is on the picture. I don't know what page it's on.
Do you have a page number, Ms. Amavisca?
19, maybe?
Page 19?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Is this, is this the true picture of it, or does it, is it shrunk somehow? Because it's awfully, it seems like there's, the roads are really...
Yeah, it's more of a panoramic type picture, speaking of the upper picture. That's skewed so that you can fit the whole site into that picture.
Okay, because I...
More rectangular than that would lead you to believe.
Going to think we don't want roads that close surrounding the school, but that's short. Okay, that was just my question. I was concerned.
Yeah, Ms. Pierce?
Yes.
I just have a, just an interest question.
Okay.
The document, the one that was distributed to all of us, is a pretty extensive document. Approximately, how much time gets invested in the, in the work to...
In the preparation of this document?
Generate a document like this?
Mr. Heinecke, our director of planning, may have to help me with this, and I thank him for his work, but hundreds of hours with everything that it entails. And I will tell you also, Mr. Fortina and members of the board, but you all probably are aware, the reason that a mitigated negative declaration was acceptable is because the overall development that was previously approved by the city of Rancho Cordova had an environmental impact report. The board will recall, when we built Casumnas River Elementary School, we couldn't piggyback, if you will, a previous environmental document, so we had to conduct our own environmental impact report, much more extensive, probably that tall, many, many, many more hours. So, certainly hundreds of hours, couple hundred hours minimally in this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was along those lines. This is in a planned community, which makes it quite a bit different as far as the process for, for us, because the Rancho Cordova has done quite a bit. I really, and I thought it really dovetailed well with the other resolution tonight. They really focus on walkable communities and walkable schools, and I really appreciate, I really actually enjoy reading these.
Good, glad you do.
Sorry, I do. It's got history, it's got geography, it's got a lot of great information in it, so I actually saved them.
They are interesting.
So, with that, we can, do we need a motion to move it forward?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll ask for a motion to move forward to the next meeting.
I'll second it.
Then moved and seconded to move the attached resolution number 13 forward to the October 7th meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried unanimously by all those present. And next, we will go to, let's see, is it item? I think we already did those. Seven, Walk to School Week Resolution.
Thank you again, President Cox, members of the board, Mr. Sarudy and Ms. Heine. We come before the board annually each year to give an update on our walk to school efforts, and I'm very proud in the last two years, including this year, because we now have a Safe Routes to School Coordinator due to a collaborative effort with the city of Elk Grove whereby Ms. Dixon's position is funded through a Safe Routes to School non-infrastructure grant that's actually administered through the city of Elk Grove and channeled through us. So, now we don't just talk to you about the Safe Routes to School activities that are coming up on Safe Routes to School Day, but also the activities that we've conducted in the previous year. So, I will introduce Ms. Dixon. The board did receive a B.C. on Friday that outlined some special Safe Routes to School activities for Stone Lake Elementary School. Just know that you will also receive an additional B.C. that will outline the other 38 elementary schools and the activities that they will hold on Safe Routes to School. So, with that, I will introduce Ms. Lisa Dixon, who you've all met before.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Good evening, President Cox, members of the board, Mr. Sarudy and Ms. Heine. It's a pleasure to be back and to provide you with some highlights on the previous year, or my first year here. It was a very exciting year, and so with that, I'd like to just get started. Just as a recap of what Safe Routes to School is, in keeping with the theme of collaboration we've been talking about tonight, that's exactly what Safe Routes to School programs are. It's a collaborative effort that involves parents, school, the community, all levels of government, all with the aim of improving the health of our children by encouraging them to walk and bike to school. Our history here in Elk Grove has been a long, strong history, going back to 2002... Our history here in Elk Grove has been a long, strong history, going back to 2002, having Walk to School Day and Walking Wednesdays. In 2010, the board adopted a policy supporting Safe Routes to School, and then last year we implemented Project Aware, which is advancing walk-in role environments. That's the grant that funds my position. Okay? So, the intent of our program is to integrate and to complement and expand. It's not to create more work for staff, but actually to expand on our existing Safe Routes to School activities. We continue to offer the Safe Routes to School Resource Binder, which was developed early on before I was on board as a resource to principals. A copy of that is available in our shared drive, and it contains information about the five Es, and that is what all Safe Routes to School programs are built upon. So in the next slide, here are the five Es: education, encouragement, evaluation, enforcement, and engineering. And so, what I'll do from this point forward is kind of talk about what we've done in this past year to address each of those Es. Here is the actual goals from the grant agreement. So, under education, the goals are to deliver safety instruction at school assemblies, classroom education, we want to integrate that into our curriculum, provide bike and pedestrian skills training and practice, and then to also provide parent training events and related information. So, some of the things that we've done in this area is we've initiated a partnership with UC Davis Injury Prevention Program, and what that program does is it provides free bicycle helmets, school-wide, to each school that they visit, and it's a collaborative effort, again, with UC Davis, Sac State intern nurses, and they go out to our schools, and they actually provide bicycle safety education to each classroom, and they fit each student with a helmet. So each student leaves with a helmet that day. And to date, the results are, we have 2,770 students that have received bicycle helmets, along with some safety education. So, last year, they visited Prairie, Anna Kirschgader, Union House, and John Reeth, and then scheduled for this coming fall and throughout 2015, we have Lineback scheduled, MAC, and Morse. So, and we're real happy with that, with that number there, and we want to see that continue to increase. Another program that we've implemented, and it's another collaborative effort and partnership, is with the city of Sacramento. Their Department of Transportation offers free assemblies. It's called the Captain Jerry Traffic Safety Program, and they visit schools, again, this is a free program, and they talk about crosswalk safety, bicycle safety, seatbelt safety, school bus safety. And again, the program is addressed, they actually provide two assemblies at each school, one to the K to three, and then another assembly for the four to sixth graders. To date, they've provided the assembly to over 3,000 students, and we have more assemblies scheduled for fall of 2014, and so those are for Union House, Lineback, and MAC. Now, this program, since it is with the city of Sacramento, they only provide the program to the schools that are in the city of Sacramento. So, once these last three schools are completed, then it will, it will actually complete all of our elementary schools in the city of Sacramento. Under that encouragement E, we have Walk to School Day coming up. This year is October the 8th. We anticipate participation from all 39 of our elementary schools. And this year, we're providing promotional kits to all of our elementary schools. They'll be receiving two to four kits. Each of the kits receive a banner and cliff fruit ropes and educational worksheets. So depending on the population of the school, they'll get two to four kits. So, and we're actually getting a total of like 32,000 cliff ropes, so that's a big, a big number, there's a lot of cliff ropes. And in the past, our schools have initiated this effort on their own, but usually they would get one kit, and it wouldn't be enough, you know, for all the kids that participated. So, this year, we went ahead and we got an early start, and the folks at Safe Routes to School National Partnership and Cliff Bar was nice enough to provide us with more kits. As Mr. Pierce mentioned, the city of Elk Grove, they also have a Safe Routes to School grant, and they reached out to us and wanted to partner this year, kind of an adopt a school type of theme, and Stone Lake was selected, and they're supporting activities this year. They're going to have their mayor come out, their police department is going to be providing a safety assembly, and they're going to have some educational handouts and things like that at Stone Lake this year. Under the evaluation E, here is what our goals look like in the grant. We're to, we're to conduct walk audits at our K through eight schools, conduct parent surveys and student tallies, and implement safety patrols. And so what we've done so far, we have completed our student travel tallies and our parent surveys. That was something we did in the first two or three months of me coming on board, and the data that we collected does meet our grant objective, and we'll use that data at the end of the grant for comparison purposes. The travel tallies pretty much confirm what we already knew, that most of our students come to school in a car. The parent surveys, it's more of an attitudal type of survey. Some of the surprises was, heavy backpacks was kind of a recurring theme, as kind of a deterrent to walking. But at the end of the grant, we'll go back, we'll survey the same schools with the same survey forms, and then hopefully we'll see a decrease in car travel and the congestion around schools, and we'll see more biking and walking, based on the programs that we're implementing and some of the infrastructure that we'll talk about with our partners. Continuing under that evaluation E, we've conducted walk audits at three of our schools, Union House, Prairie, and Jackman. And again, here are some of our partners that we collaborated with. Walk Sacramento led the walk audit at Union House and Prairie. We worked with UC Berkeley Safe Trek to lead a half-day workshop at Jackman, and Union House participants included our English Learner Advisory Committee parents and local law enforcement, and Prairie participants included local law, I'm sorry, local city traffic engineers. And then, another walk audit prior to Project Aware was conducted at Anna Kirschgader, and that was in partnership with Walk Sacramento and the county of Sacramento. Additional evaluation, the city of Elk Grove completed a grant application, and they reached out to us for some data. They wanted information on sidewalk gaps that were near our schools in the city of Elk Grove, and so we were able to provide them with that information. We identified 15 locations that had sidewalk gaps near our schools or along the path to our schools, and so they used that information to apply for a grant this past August. And this, if the grant is funded, can have possible engineering impacts, because they'll be able to provide infields along our routes to school. The enforcement E, here again is what our grant goal states, to collaborate with Elk Grove Unified School District Police Services to implement parent patrols and safety patrols. And then here are some of the things that we've done over the past year. We've started a school traffic safety committee that's been formed with the city of Elk Grove. Again, that's another collaborative effort. And then, our program also consults and collaborates with police services, our own police services, to provide joint school site observations. We've done several of those recently in the past month. And then, we also, I call on them quite a bit when we have school zone traffic issues as well. And continuing with engineering, these are some of the things we've done with our city and county partners. With the city of Sacramento, we participated in some observations with them at Lineback, and that has resulted in a marked crosswalk will be installed or painted in front of Lineback Elementary School. We also, as a result of the walk audit that we did at Jackman, we identified a large intersection at Bamford and Center Parkway that is crossed by our students that was unmarked, and so a work order is in process to have a marked crosswalk placed at that location as well. We worked with the city of Elk Grove, as I mentioned previously, with their active transportation grant applications. In addition to the sidewalk gap application, they also submitted an application to improve the Laguna Creek Trail, and they used our data that we collected at the beginning of this grant that shows how our students travel to school and our parent surveys, they included that information, along with attendance information in their grant applications. Similar information was provided to the city of Rancho Cordova for their grant application to extend the Anatolia Bike Trail. We've also provided all of our partners with letters of support, of support for their grant applications. The Sacramento County, the project, the Stevenson Avenue Sidewalk Improvement Project, again, that's, a project was, it's owned by the county of Sacramento, but we do collaborate with them on that project, and they provide us with the status of the construction and things like that. But that will result in sidewalks being installed along Stevenson Avenue. Engineering, okay, so our partners, as I've been explaining, they use the data that we collect to inform their future infrastructure projects. The project that I'm funded under, Project Aware, is a non-infrastructure program. So, again, we collect the data, share it with our partners, and then they're able to move forward and implement infrastructure projects. And then, just as another engineering item, we have a Marion Mix that's being built. We've participated in some community meetings, trying to be proactive and talking about traffic calming measures and making sure that they have, you know, crosswalks and bike lanes and along Franklin Boulevard. We've talked to the city about installing some speed feedback signs there. Again, all in an effort to be proactive and to make it easier for students to walk and bike to school. And then lastly, just as a reminder, October the 8th, there's Walk to School Day. All of our elementary schools will participate in some way or another, either on that day or during the month of October, and as Mr. Pierce mentioned, we will provide you with the list of activities and hope you're able to join our students.
And there was Priscilla.
Yeah, yes. I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, and really pleased to see that this is moving forward and getting information to back up what we need to move forward. So, it's very, very helpful to have you in this position. And I'll ask for board member comments, and Mr. Pierce, do you want to start?
Yes. What's the latest status on Stevenson Avenue? It seems like it's going a little bit too slow for me.
Yeah, we actually just got an update from them in the past couple of weeks, and that project has been delayed until next summer, was it?
Next summer?
Bill, you want to expand on that? That's more of a, I know, it's disappointing.
Yeah. Good evening. The county has informed us that they had some delays in some utility relocation in order to make Stevenson wider. It relocates some utility poles, and not all of the utilities were timely in moving their wires to the new poles, and therefore, they cannot start construction this fall soon enough to complete before the rains come. And so, they've decided to wait until next summer to do that construction. It'll occur during the summer months after school is out and be completed before school starts.
Has the county of Sacramento requested a data, anything from us?
Yeah, they actually have requested our Safe Routes to School data that we've collected on mode travel, so we've provided that information to them.
Okay. What is the school's zone traffic issues of today?
You know, it lasts about maybe 15 to 20 minutes during drop-off and pickup. It's the congestion, it's, you know, everybody has somewhere to be. Some of the behaviors that we see are, you know, not taking the time to pull over to the curb, you know, dropping kids off in the middle of the street, double parking, things like that. It's mostly related to car congestion.
And how are we resolving that issue?
At some schools, you know, we've provided them with some of the Safe Routes to School best practices, like considering having a valet program where we have a dedicated drop-off area and perhaps having students with vests on and having some training assist students out of the car. They always exit from the passenger side, they unload maybe four to five cars at a time, keeps traffic moving, the flow moving quicker, but that's one way. The basis of any improvement is going to be education, traffic safety education, enforcement, you know, working with police services, having them out there, you know, after we provide the education, you know, a ticket is another form of education, so.
Okay. And my last question, when my kids were in school, there was a lot of issues going back and forth to school, and biggest one was rudder from the corner of LC and Power Inn Road, and few kids were hit. And one of my biggest concerns, I went to the Highway Patrol and looked at the data sets that they had. Do we get those data sets from the California Highway Patrol, the city of Elk Grove Police, the county sheriff office regarding data, the kids are hit to and from school?
Yes, yes, we do. I have access to Switzer's data, and it actually, I should have mentioned that on the slide, where we, I actually reached out to the northwest area of our district because of that data, because there are more crashes, auto, ped, bike conflicts in that area, not necessarily involving our students, but around our schools. And so, yeah, I did use that data to determine which schools I reached out to, like for the workshops and things like that and the walk audits.
So are we using that data for priority of funding?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Right, if there's more kids getting hit on the north side of our district, do we pay more attention to that issue versus another area?
Yeah, actually, that's what I was saying. That's why I reached out to that area first, and I have provided some schools with information and vests and things like that for, for like a valet program and things like that, and for safety cones to, you know, make it a little bit safer in the parking lot area and things like that. But, so, yes, so we have.
Do we have, I think you may have mentioned we might have some parent training classes also, besides students?
Yeah, and actually, the workshop that we had at Jackman and the one that we, that we, the walk audit at Prairie, does have a training component, and we had, we had several parents in attendance where we provided them with, you know, pedestrian safety information, and then we actually went out and walked the area and talked about, you know, things that were working well, things that can be improved. Some of the audits, we actually had the traffic engineer there with us. The ones that didn't have a traffic engineer, then we followed up and provided them a copy of the report, and we're working with them to get some of those improvements in place.
And my last question is, because of this new law, when you ride to, when kids are riding or anybody riding on a bike, there's three feet perimeter, how are we dealing with that issue?
Well, that's an enforcement issue, well, and an education issue, you know, that's something that, now that you mention it, that we could add to our traffic safety brochure. It was something I included on a trivia quiz that we had in a staff meeting recently, but yeah, so we need to get that word out. It just became effective, I believe, today.
Okay, yes, thank you very much.
I don't have any questions, but thank you for an excellent report. My position is well deserved, so thank you for being here and doing this. This is a really good program, and I know that on the Walk to School Day, that the schools have made it fun for all of the kids, even for the kids whose parents normally drive them to school guilty. They, they've got places where you can drop the kids off in the They've got places where you can drop the kids off and then they can walk the last couple of weeks. So, it's fun for everybody and it's just a great program. So, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, very, very good report. Are we tracking anything where we can see sort of a lifestyle change that we, once a parent has received this information, that their child then either walks or bikes to school? Do we have any traction on, you know, or are we tracking something like that?
Yeah.
So, I would think that the ultimate goal is not just this week, but that this happens moving forward.
Right. Actually, the parent survey, there are several questions where we capture their attitude. Right now, the initial survey, we got a lot of, "I'll never allow my child to walk," you know, a lot of the stranger danger fears. So, we're hoping, you know, with the implementation of the program and the education, that when we go back and do that survey again, some of those attitudes will have changed and that they are allowing, you know, and we're not encouraging them to let their children walk alone.
Right.
But as a group or together, the walking school buses, things like that, you know, they're the ultimate judge of when and where their children can walk. But we're hoping that when we conduct those surveys again, that those attitudes will have changed and that they feel better about letting their children walk, you know, based on the education and then also based on some of the improvements, you know, that we hope to have in place over the next few years.
And one, excellent questions and excellent points. It really boils down to the culture of the school and the climate and how people feel. It's going to take constant education and encouragement. We are now having principals included in more recent, if you will, newsletters. We're not trying to add work. They're already busy, 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 so we're trying to help supplement them. And it's not just about safety, there's a health and fitness component to this as well. I'll give Mr. Nevis some kudos. He's going to start a walking school bus.
Nice.
He's going to meet kids at a park on a Wednesday.
Oh.
So, rather than drop off in front of the school, you know, parents can drop off at a park. That takes congestion away from the school, they'll walk together. So, it's going to take parents to volunteer, that other parents know and trust and see, and all walk your child to school if you park them off around the corner or at a park. And I think as the culture starts to change, but it's going to take time and a little effort. But that's exactly the point.
Is to have that lifestyle change.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, my other question is, this is great for elementary, what about secondary? And I get that, you know, in high school, a lot of kids are driving and they, but maybe more, you know, can we have this discussion for middle schools?
Right, yeah.
For at least those that are living near. In my case, I'm across town in Stone Lake and to have my child walk or ride a bike to Pinkerton is not the, would take probably 40 minutes and not the best decision unless he gets up at 5:00.
Yeah. This particular program is K through 8, so it does include our middle schools. Our middle schools do work with our elementary schools on Walk to School Day. They provide, you know, band, their bands come out and play. They pass out treats and things like that. I have the workshop that we conducted at Jackman, I also followed up with some bike material because they have a large, a pretty large bike population over there. So, I have started to reach out to our middle schools as well.
Great, thank you.
Excellent report, I have no questions, thank you.
I think it's been covered, the key points is the attitude and culture of our schools. I mean, it's just, and I think the elementary schools, to me, are the worst. I mean, they are, the congestion, everyone I've gone to, I don't care what part of the district, they're all the same. People making U-turns illegal and mommy setting in cars, live across the street and they're getting the, so I think the educational part of the parent, to me, is critical, just to change that culture and that attitude in there. But a good report though, Lisa, thank you.
I agree with the education.
Yeah. You know, you've been doing good work since you've started and it is important to try to instill behaviors in the young kids because I do think, unfortunately, it's a fact of life that we have to deal with rude and inconsiderate and me first. And no matter what you do, it's tough to change those behaviors. The people who double park, who speed and jeopardize our children, who do the U-turns in the middle of the block, shutting everything down, they are rude, they are inconsiderate, they are me first. But I know that your efforts are working towards that. The only question I had, and you partially addressed it already, in the parent questionnaire that goes out, in terms of the question about them allowing their children to go, because I know a lot of parents don't feel comfortable. In addition to your work, do you know, do the principals vis-à-vis their teachers go another step with the parents to look at ways in which they can change things so that parents would indeed feel comfortable to allow their kids to walk or ride their bikes?
Yeah, some of the schools do, via their PTA or PTO, they also, I've gone to a couple of schools that have had me come out and it's been like a parent night or a parent meeting and we talk about Safe Route to School and driving behaviors and things like that. So, some are further along in that education process than others. I do have access to some curriculum type of information that I'd like to share. I'm working with my supervisors to find out the methodology to get that into the schools. But there's a lot of resources out there on educate, I mean, that will provide education if we could get it integrated into our curriculum and find out the process to do that.
What do we do, what do we need to do to make that happen?
That's what I need to find out. Yeah, that's what I need to find out, the process, because, I mean, being here for a year, I do realize there's certain processes in place. So, I probably should start with elementary ed, Ms. Cherry's office, and then find out the steps or maybe even learning a curriculum. Yeah, so.
I'll touch on that.
Okay.
Great point, Mr. Fortina. One thing that I'll add, Ms. Dixon's first goal of the grant was to go out and do the parent and student surveys for a baseline data set and then to start doing the evaluation in terms of audits. She is now, I won't say desperate, but she's looking to start integrating a little more, not only into curriculum, but easy things that principals can start utilizing to help themselves. Because I can assure the board that every principal that I have this conversation with would love to see an improvement to their drop off and pickup situation. In fact, I would not like to start my day off as an administrator at an elementary school site in that manner. In some cases, I'm a parent dropping off my children, so I see it each and every day. But they are, they're very much looking forward to integrating something and trying. And because in some cases, getting parents to change their ways or to even come to have a discussion about that can be difficult. So, whether it's hosting a pizza night or trying to integrate it in a back to school night, but it's going to take some constant education. So, we're starting to roll that piece out now. And it's just, I really think it's going to be, it's got to be repetitive in order for it to finally stick. And some champions, some parents that champion the cause and take it to heart and start getting trust from others. But I will promise you, it's been tough. Changing behaviors is very tough.
We've done it before with energy conservation and water conservation, so I know it'll have to.
Well, thank you for excellent reporting for updating us in this timely manner. You can tell there's a consensus of support from the board for this event and for it being integrated more than just one day a year, but just definitely, it's an exciting event and I have a long history with Walk to School Day and I think I've been to every one since 2002. So, in some years, I go to a few because they have them on different days. But it, definitely pleased with the partnerships and being able to work with all our three cities in our county to advance this. And sorry about the county delaying and that's disappointing. We, several of us walked that Stevenson to, it's really too bad that that's not being fixed sooner, but hopefully it will get there someday. And your suggestions for your Walk to School with elementary, I'm glad you answered the questions because most students that walk to school for elementary need adult supervision and it's fitness for parents just as it much is for kids. So, we used to laugh because they used to drop their kids off at the, on their way to the gym and it was congestion and they were trying, and we thought, "Well, if you drop down here, you both could walk," you know. But again, parent education, the fact that every year we get quite a few new students and parents into our district that don't realize what the options are. So, it's a continual process and changing culture and behavior would help with that. But excellent report. We will now call, I'll now call for a motion to approve the resolution for October 6th to 10th as Walk to School Week.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Lee, seconded by Ms. Singh Allen, to approve the resolution October 6th to 10th as Walk to School Week. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried unanimously by all those present. Thank you, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you.
Next, we have Character Education Month by Anna Trinell.
Good evening, President Cox, members of the board, Superintendent Sarudy and Ms. Heine. I come before you tonight to request the resolution that the month of October 2014 be affirmed Character Education Month in our schools. On July 7th, 1997, the Board of Education of the Elk Grove Unified School District approved recommendations of the Civic Values and Ethics Education Action Team. Those recommendations included the observation of Character Education Month. The State Board of Education has designated October 2014 as Character Education Month. Through passage of a resolution affirming Character Education Month, the Board of Education would support the recommendations of the Civic Values and Ethics Education Action Team. Further, the designation of Character Education Month supports our Elk Grove Unified School District core values.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments?
No.
And again, this isn't just for one month that we practice this. It's just to highlight it for a month and it is from our State Board of Education who has designated October as Character Education Month. Then I will, I'll call for a motion.
Can I move Resolution Number 15, Establishment of Character Education Month?
It's been moved by Mr. Fortina, seconded by Mr. Perez, to establish the month of October as Character Education Month in our schools. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried unanimously by all those present.
Thank you.
Next, thank you, Ms. Trinell. And next on the agenda is our Gear Up, National Gear Up Week Resolution. And this is my, Ms. Tina Penna. And that's next week.
Thank you, Mrs. Cox, members of the board, Superintendent Sarudy and Ms. Heine. Before I begin, I actually would like to call two people to the podium. The first is Crystal Robinson, who is the Bridge Project Manager for Gear Up here in our district, and she is representing Gear Up this evening. And the second is Principal Chelsea Bowler Shelton from Valley High School, who has been the recipient of Gear Up services for her students. Actually, Chelsea has not been the principal this long, but this is 10 years that we have been actually operating the bridge program. So, Chelsea, if you would come up as well. Tonight, I'm proud to ask the board to approve a resolution recognizing next week, September 26th to, 22nd, rather, to 26th as National Gear Up Week. Elk Grove Unified School District's students and staff have benefited from the support of California Gear Up, which stands for Gaining Early Awareness and Readiness for Undergraduate Programs. Established in 1998, Gear Up's program goal is to develop and sustain the organizational capacity of middle schools to prepare all students for high school and higher education through a statewide network of support for adults, counselors, faculty, school leaders, and family who influence middle school students. As I said, for the past 10 years, Samuel Jackman Middle School and Valley High School students have benefited from Gear Up's Bridges for Students model, which is the only such program in the nation. Also, in May 2012, Gear Up announced that five Elk Grove Unified School District schools, middle schools, out of 48 statewide, were selected to be Gear Up middle schools for the 2012 to 2017 program implementation phase. These include Edward Harris Jr., Harriet G. Eddy, Samuel Jackman, James Rutter, and T.R. Smedberg Middle Schools. Through this grant, Gear Up provides resources to support students in improving performance in mathematics and in developing a college-going mindset. Elk Grove Unified School District is strongly committed to supporting a long-term partnership with Gear Up. We're very pleased that it's moving through at least 2017 because we realizes, realize the benefit that it provides for our students. So, I would ask the board to approve this resolution this evening. And we do have a certificate.
Would, okay, maybe we can have a picture. Mr. Madison, would you like to go down with, Mr. of Valley High School? And we will have a photo op here. This is an outstanding program and has met with much success. Ms. Penna, would you please be on the photo? Any comments or questions from board members on the program? It is an outstanding program. Thank you, yes, boy, just everywhere tonight. With that, I will call for a motion to approve the resolution recognizing September 22nd through 26th as National Gear Up Week.
You already have a motion.
I did? Never mind then, I will call for a vote. Got distracted there, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is our United Way Campaign. And I believe this is Mr. Sarudy, or Superintendent Sarudy.
Thank you, Madam President. It's my pleasure to bring this item to the board. The United Way is, as we all know, an organization dedicated to public service and Elk Grove, the Elk Grove Unified School District has enjoyed a longstanding partnership with the United Way. Last year in 2014, we gathered more than $65,000 to contribute to the United Way and we look forward to continuing that. And so, I respectfully bring to the board a request to approve the attached resolution which proclaims the period between October 1st through October 31st of 2014 as the United Way Campaign for the Elk Grove Unified School District. And I do want to acknowledge Torianna Johnson, who will be chairing this event. And it's a considerable amount of work and she'll do a terrific job, as will our entire school district.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Okay, I'll ask for approval, I mean, a motion to approve. Okay, Ms. Almaviska, move the Resolution Number 17, Mr. Fortina seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried unanimously. We have board member and superintendent reports. I do have two blue cards. The public comment period was announced earlier, but if you wish to speak to this now, you could have the three minutes each, I don't know. We have Steve Volmer, and please state your name for the record.
Hi, board and Madam President, I'm Steve Volmer and I'm kind of a bridge here. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for El Dorado Union High School District. I actually came here thinking that my boss was going to be here and I was going to sit alongside of him because he could not know and exactly, so I was just here to give support. So, I put my card in because I had to at least address you in some way. You have indicated that Superintendent Hoffman is the salt of the earth and I would back that at 1,000 percent. He has, he has, I appreciate him, I'm not sure if I should like you guys or not, because he has, I've worked in education for 40 years, I've had many superintendents, I have not had a better one than Superintendent Hoffman. He treats everyone with great respect. Our classified folks would say he honors them, respects them, holds them in high esteem as well as anybody, any member in our staff. I think he holds us with high expectations for our work. He always says, "Our kids aren't getting better until we get better." He has another little phrase, his phrases are great. I've heard many phrases. I, I've heard my, many phrases. I've heard many phrases. He makes them very real. They are not just phrases. In fact, he doesn't use a lot of them, but when he uses them, he, you know, he, one of, one of ours is "Each kid, every day." And I can't tell you how much we recite that at every meeting we go to and every place we go. Our LCAP procedure was wonderful. There was involvement from everybody in, input into that. I walked into a councilor's meeting, I'm meeting with many of our groups in our district, and we were having a meeting, and the first, I didn't prep them or anything with this. They go, "We have some discussion items here that we have to discuss aside." They go, "Well, did you bring our LCAP with us? We got to make sure," or meeting. They go, I mean, think of how, what that takes to have that spontaneous response from a group of councilors, who we have several things that want to make sure. I, of course, had brought them anyway, so they were going to do that anyway. But, they, they initiated that discussion. I just think that, that poignantly states what he's all about. He, he has, he has a great family. He has great integrity with his family. I think when you can trust a man with integrity with his family, you can also trust him in his work relationships. So, I, I know of that. I, I ask you that you would grant him some time with that family. His two boys are wonderful. You know, they need, and he, and he will ask for that. If you see them together, you just know why he gets along with other students and other people, too. So, I just wanted to operate as a bridge here. I appreciate you. We're excited for him. We'll miss him greatly. But we are very excited for him. We always actually follow, I do, look at what you guys are doing. You face many challenges that perhaps we don't not face. And I always look at what kind of processes you're using to, to help us with our process. So, I respect what you do. I appreciate that. I, I recognize that you were a board member when he was a senior at Valley High School.
Ouch. Oh, my God. I don't like you.
I thought that was great. I was going, what, full circle. Sorry, don't mention that. I said that. And, anyway, you will, you will, you will love him. He's a, he's a man that's, that's worth your respect, and he will respect you greatly also. He, he holds the board in very high esteem that he works with, and he knows the job you do and the work you put out for, for minimal. And, and he is, he is very appreciative of that. Anyway, thank you for.
Well, thank you for coming and speaking.
You honor us for.
Yeah. I'm sorry we didn't have the blue card when this was on the agenda, but we appreciate that.
You can always come back in the morning.
Yeah, we are having a meet and greet tomorrow morning.
I'm, I'm going to that.
Oh, good. Okay. We'll see you tomorrow morning then. All right, next is Catherine Duran. And, you know, the procedure to, you have three minutes, and please state your name for the record.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Duran. I, oh, good evening, Mr. Sarudi, board members. I just have a couple of questions, actually. I wanted to know what the procedure is for opting out of the state, the state testing and any of the Common Core-related testing, the, the questionnaires, the surveys, the things like that, the privacy concerns, as, according to the state laws. So, I'm just curious if we have a procedure for that, because I'm not finding anything on the website. And none of the parents that I know in the district are, have been informed of their rights to opt out of the testing.
Okay, I'm going to have you speak with Ms. Cherry. She will give you those answers to those questions.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Next on the agenda is board member and superintendent reports. Do we have any reports?
No report.
No report. I think we've all been doing, doing the same thing, but.
I just want to add just a few things. The spotlight on Elk Grove was a success. I think we had a very good turnout, and hopefully we raised a lot of money for our children and the scholarship foundation. Thank you.
And actually, since you're talking about that, that was an awesome event. I, I go for, for the food, obviously. And, you know, I, I always go hungry, and I walk out of there stuffed. But, you know, that is just a, you know, certainly for the community that came out to support, you know, our students and the scholarship fund, it's just tremendous. Can't begin to express how grateful I am as a school board member to see that.
Right. And it was nice to see a, a lot of the vendors from Elk Grove area. Just really good folks with good food out there, and wine. Thank you.
I don't have any committee reports, but I would like to report that the Elk Grove Food Bank will have its open house on Thursday from 4:30 to 7:30. Elk Grove Food Bank, as a former board member, they do amazing work, and they do serve over 1,000 of our students on a very regular basis. So, I, I will be there, and I would love to see more representatives for that open house as well. Thank you.
Okay, then we'll go to the consent agenda, and I'll have Mr. Madison read that.
Priscilla, do we have to abstain from the personnel since our names are on there for resigning? Can we approve, we vote for our own resignation?
I don't know. It's a good question. You're not resigning. You're just not running for a resignation.
I'm teasing. I'm joking. I'm jesting, you guys.
Okay, the consent agenda as follows. 11, approval of the minutes. 12, personnel actions. 13, approval of purchase order history. 14, approval of the warrant register. 15, ratification of contracts. 16, acceptance of gifts. 17, supplemental educational services provider contracts. 18, ratification of non-public agencies, the NPS, NPA contracts. 19, approval option of five-year extension to lease agreement of property at the old transportation yard to the Elk Grove Community Food Bank Services. With that, I'll move the consent agenda as read.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as read. Are there any comments or questions, or I'll call for a vote then on the consent agenda, or a motion on the, excuse me, a vote on the consent agenda. I'm getting out of order here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstained? Jeanette? Motion carried. Motion carried. Are there any other items from the floor or for future agendas? If not, I hope to see as many of us tomorrow morning at Valley High School to welcome our new superintendent. The meeting is adjourned.
I thought your last meeting was good. This one's even better yet.